I'd like to call to order the work session for October thirteenth. And let's see, I did everyone get the do we need to do a roll call, I guess?
Yeah. Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood. I see Karen. Okay, I'll take that as a here. Mayor Greenberg or Quorum is present.
Thank you. Let me get back to, okay. Did everyone include the other applicants for the boards? That were were after I published the last spreadsheet?
I did it through the deadline of last Wednesday evening. Right? There was one after that.
Let's see, so.
Can you read the names of the additional people?
Nancy Schick, Zachary Folk and John Eric Hansen.
I think Zachary's the one that came in after Wednesday, so, all right.
Okay. Keeps on going back to my, let me. I apologize, I need to minimize some windows here. For someone known reason, it's. Okay, I'm back. So if anyone, if anyone's confirmed that that came in afterwards, then Zachary will be eliminated from consideration then. Okay, so. As far as. Let's start with Board of Adjustment, Housing Board of Appeals. Everyone that's on there, I believe, is current. And there aren't any vacancies, is that correct? I've got the one spreadsheet in front of me, but not the vacancies.
My understanding is that Housing Board of Appeals and Design, I think Designer Review are like the exact same board, is that right?
No, that would be Historic Preservation Designer Review.
So how's it that Housing Board of Appeals overlaps with something else, right?
Board of Adjustment, yes.
And Karen, the the master list does not show any openings.
Yeah, Board of, yeah.
The next one is in 2020.
Yeah.
Now, that was the board, I don't mean to interrupt, and I don't know what the what list you're looking at, but does it show we have an alternate?
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on to Civil Service Commission, that that's the same situation is my understanding. That there are no current openings, everyone is, okay, so let's move on to Design and Review Board and Historic Preservation. We've confirmed that Matt Wolf is still on the on the roster there. How many opens, how many openings do we have on that?
Well, that gives us two if Matt Wolf, his term has indeed expired.
It has not.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, it's not, okay.
So there's one. I think Barry, if you have that list I sent out last week, I think it has all the accurate list of vacancies and up.
Let me, it it was in Word format and it didn't come across very well. Let me.
It's just a list of names, so it would be easy to just.
That puts us down to one vacancy on Designer Review, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Whoever we, you guys ultimately decide, you know, to agree on with that board, remember that that is probably our most labor-intensive board we have. They they meet every every month and for a pretty extended period of time. So whoever you guys ultimately decide, and we want to make sure they understand the commitment that's necessary for that.
Okay. This this came through with a completely different format this time, and I can actually read it. Must have been the device that I had previously, so. Yeah, Paul Barker has resigned. So we have one vacancy, vacancy, and we have two people that would that listed it as their first choice. So I would start with them. As far as opinions on Matthew Coriel and Juan Reyes. Would someone like to start the discussion? Yeah, and and the question is, are, I assume that we're nominating. You know, is the purpose tonight to nominate members for each of the boards?
I believe so, to choose the people that we want to nominate.
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
And I mean, my understanding is that then the next thing would be to contact them and confirm that they want to do that one, and then to write the ordinance or whatever it is that confirms them.
I do have one, you know, thought. You guys obviously are be at 100% your decision, but if possible, when you do nominate Plan and Zoning Commission, is it possible we could do, staff could do a brief interview with that person just to make sure they understand the implications for from their voting? I mean, if we're ever going to get sued, it could potentially be a plan and zoning issue. We want to make sure we don't get somebody that's anti-development on the Plan and Zoning Commission, because one of the reasons Maplewood's been so successful is we're extremely business-friendly, and we want to make sure they don't delay actions and things of that nature unless there's a a need for that. It's just a, it's a suggestion. That's the one board that I'm most concerned with who you put on that board. Not that the other ones aren't important, but that one, there are legal implications to make sure we get the right person. Councilmember Phillips was on that board, she understands the implications. Unless you disagree.
I completely agree with you.
Yeah, I I'm in favor of that also.
Could you, could you clarify what you mean by leave? Are you saying the fact that the way zoning laws work, you can't turn something down just because you don't like it? Is that what you mean by that?
Yes, and there's administrative processes and legislative processes that they're that they're available to, plus the vote with some of them, there could be a supermajority required by council. Similar similar actions, Councilmember Schmidt for the Board of Adjustment, and I can give you a a brief background. We've turned certain requests down. I'll use the front yard driveway, for example, and we've had situations where if you turn all these other ones down and then all of a sudden you start approving them, you're opening yourself up to legal exposure from prior decisions. And so we've we've had in the past some people on the Board of Adjustment that vote yes on everything, and that's obviously a concern because we could be open ourselves up for legal exposure. And again, that's it's very rare that happens, but that would be a board I'd want to sit down with them and say, hey, here's some past decisions, here's some things, are you comfortable with this? And we haven't had a challenging plan and zoning issue recently, but we almost had one with McDonald's at where the Raising Canes was. And so I want to make sure they understand they may be voting on something that could potentially be divisive within the community, just so they're aware of that and are not surprised.
That makes sense to me. I think SPD has some of the same. Well, maybe a little bit different criteria, but let's, so to clarify, we've, anyone that's involved in, that's being considered for planning and zoning will will be interviewed prior to nomination by the by the staff.
And I mean, if Councilmember Phillips, I don't mean to, or you know, since you were a planning and zoning member, if you want to sit down on that as well, it's it's, or Mayor Greenberg, it's fine. I'm just going to ask some very simple questions and just try to get a feel for them and explain. You know, our pro-business approach, we obviously balance resident and business interest, but we are, we do like to expedite our plans and permits as quickly as possible, and I've worked for some other cities where, you know, to get a conditional use permit for a restaurant might take two or three months, you know, we can, we do that in half the time.
Yeah, I'd be happy to sit in if if you guys would like me to.
Okay. So moving back to Designer Review Board, we have one vacancy. On, in this case, the members that are on Designer Review Board. And I apologize, Anthony, are we looking for a resident, a businessperson, or or someone that's either?
Looking at that list right now. I thought we decided we were going to do an either or, didn't we decide we were going to change the criteria a little bit? To make it more flexible?
And it looks like Matt Wolf has his business listed.
Right.
So I wonder if we're now looking for a resident to fill the spot of a resident who's not serving again?
Paul was a resident and a businessperson.
But isn't Mr. O'Gorman also, oh, he is not a resident, though, but he's.
That's correct.
So what is this, what does it currently say in the ordinance? Do you have?
I'll pull it.
Okay.
But should we go with, I, I thought we were changing it based on a meeting a few months ago.
We are, but I think it was the fifth one was either. And so my question is, though, do you have to be a resident and business owner is one of the things for two of them? That was, that's what I want to figure out.
I I think the requirement was for and we'll find out in a second, I thought it was for two residents, two businesspeople, and then one that can be either one.
Okay.
And in the past, you know, with myself, I was both, Paul was both.
Well, it also.
I'm reading from the ordinance, the membership of the Designer Review Board shall consist of five members, of which three members shall be representatives of the business community. At least three members of the board must be citizens of the city.
So we can do two, two and one of either, right? Based on how we wanted to change it?
We wanted to do two plus two plus a resident or.
Right, right. So we can do either here.
Ultimately, both applicants who are interested in this board are residents, though, so it doesn't really change it. If that's what the spreadsheet's saying, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of the the two.
But number one.
First choice.
Yeah, as their first choice.
Do you guys feel it's important that we choose tonight, or do you feel it's more important that we make the recommendation and then Barry's able to follow up with that conversation about making sure that they understand the commitment?
How are those different?
Well, if we're choosing tonight, then we're saying either of the the candidates that have, or, you know, whichever candidate we'd like, but once someone's had that conversation with them, they may choose to not accept.
Right, so are you suggesting that you want Barry to contact two people or?
Potentially.
I feel like if they filled out this application and they clicked the box that said, and they've read the description, that they've, they've already said they want to do it and are willing to do it. And so I feel like if we can choose, we might as well choose.
Yeah, if if for some reason someone declines, then, you know, then we can revisit it, but there's no need to add another step there.
And also, and my reference, just want to clarify, my reference to contacting the person is that because in the past, a lot of people have found out that they're going to serve on a commission by a council member reaching out to them saying, hey, we voted on your name tonight. And so I don't want that to happen.
And that brings up my concern. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what our, like, process is in the ordinance, if we're allowed to take votes on this tonight. I think even our meeting announcement, like our meeting posting, mentioning discussions, I'm not sure that even like legally we can make final votes on this tonight, or if it needs to happen in a council meeting that's been properly.
Needs to happen based on a resolution.
Okay.
Right.
Process, but at least you could at least provide guidance. It's still a public meeting. But let's say I was applying for a board and nobody wanted me on that board, you could at least have that discussion tonight. Sounds like you're giving Barry direction. You've got two, two candidates, doesn't sound like anyone has any objections. Perhaps what Sandy said makes sense, so you can talk to the two and make the appointment, and you guys can decide to approve or not.
Well, so my my idea is we were going to pick the person we wanted first tonight, and then the legal process will happen at a meeting, which requires a resolution, so we can vote, in quotes, tonight on who we want that person to be. But then that official legal nomination wouldn't happen until a meeting. So I don't want to be like, hey, these two, I thought the point of it was, let's pick someone as a first choice. I don't care if we want to pick first and second, so we have a backup, but otherwise, I don't think we're accomplishing anything.
That's only fine, just as long as we do the actual vote.
Right.
Council and.
Right. You have to have a resolution anyway for that.
Yeah, and so once you guys let us know who you want, we'll create all the resolutions for the next council meeting.
Okay. Um, to return to the candidates, um, it looks like Juan's done the Maplewood Citizens Academy, which is the plus in my book. I don't know either of these candidates, so that's not necessarily a negative against the other, but that was something I noticed in the application.
I noted that as well, Sarah. I thought that that was, should it continue interest in wanting to be involved in city matters?
Yeah, the the only main criteria that I have is is perhaps someone involved in the design profession.
And he is an engineer.
Yeah, he has a more technical experience than a, you know, a training.
I do know Matt, you know, more as a as a constituent, as well as he's a, he's a bricklayer, so so we know him just kind of from around town. I don't know Juan, so. So I don't, you know, again, knowing that that Matt has been in the construction business as a as a bricklayer. I do know he would be well-suited for the role, but I also feel like the the Citizens Academy probably gives Juan a a leg up.
I'll just let you know, Juan is, in my view, would be a good choice. I've worked with him. I don't know the other person. I haven't even looked at that really. I'll be honest with you. I'm just telling you, I know Juan well. I've even talked to him a while back, when, because he worked on our skate park. So it was part of the that shows I'm getting old, I can't even think of the name of the group, we, Stan Tech, that we hired. He was Stan Tech's local rep. He no longer works for Stan Tech, but he was involved in the preliminary discussions, he was involved in design threat. And from my perspective, he was a joy to work with and understands city, so I I I don't have a recommend or vote, but I I highly recommend Juan, just for my prior dealings.
I I think they both, I mean, they both seem qualified to do it. For me, that the edge sort of was to Juan because of his more technical experience, his involvement in Citizens Academy, and then the skate, like he has worked on actual projects in Maplewood, so that was where I ended up on.
Really good to work with. Again, I don't know the other candidate, so I'm not disparaging anybody. I'm just telling you, he was really good to deal with. When I saw he came in, I did see his name, I was kind of excited to see that he applied.
Um, then I'd like to go ahead and ask, like, can be our number one pick for this vacancy? That's appropriate?
Okay. Looks like we have a bunch of seconds there, so.
Yeah. And then if something, if for any reason he is unable to serve, then I guess you could move on to Matt as the second choice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And vacancies do come up sometimes, people move or some other reasons, some family reasons every now and then, and and we can keep all these names on file and just at least let the person know, hey, when something opens up, we'll make sure to keep your resume or application.
Okay, and then moving on to the Library Board, then, we have one vacancy, well, three vacancies and two incumbents that have reapplied. And.
Two vacancies on library or just one?
There's three, oh, I'm sorry, three, three openings and.
Oh, two incumbents that reapplied, okay.
Right.
I'm confusing myself.
Okay, and so does anyone have a problem with John Eric Hansen or Evan Love? Let's continuing on in their role. Okay. Okay, which leaves one vacancy, and we have two candidates that are, that have listed the Library Board as their number one choice, and that would be Martin Brenner and Kristen Spencer. Does anyone know these candidates? I've certainly met Kristen before.
I know Mr. Brenner as well through my kid, my child. He's great. He's really nice, easy to talk to, nice person, so.
He has a Masters of Library Science.
Yeah.
And has been a school librarian for 12 years.
I think, again, both candidates would be great. I mean, I know, clearly, I know Kristen, we ran into each other, she's very committed to Maplewood. And I know Martin as well. I do think for me, him having a library science degree kind of was kind of elevated him, and having experience with it being a school librarian, I thought was kind of nice. So.
I agree to. Does anyone have a different opinion? Okay, so Martin Brenner is is our first choice. And, yeah. Yeah, I hate to do this publicly because we've got, you know, all these people want to serve and they're qualified. It's just, and some of them obviously are more qualified than others. Unfortunately, we have to make that determination, but hopefully there'll be other chances too for and, you know, Kristen has, in this case, indicated that there's three boards that she's interested in. So hopefully, they'll be, they'll continue to express interest. So the next one is Parks Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission. We've got one vacancy, two, two incumbents that have reapplied for the other two vacancies. As far as, let's start with the incumbents, Megan Doherty and Lisa Parks. Are there any concerns with having them, you know, continue? You know, when I've talked to board chairs, I did not receive any indication from any of the chairs that they, you know, that they were interested in having someone, you know, not continue their service on their boards, so I'm just adding that. So in this case, is everyone okay with Megan and Lisa continuing?
Can I ask a general question?
Sure.
Sort of a context to consider, and I'm not necessarily specific to this particular applicant, but one thing we've talked about is, you know, getting like new people on boards, and I guess when I look at this particular board, you have one person that's been on there, that's not, their terms aren't expired, but one person for 23 years, two for 19. Those two also serve on other boards. And then, so I guess my question is, at some point, do we consider, like, you know, Ms. Parks, so I'm not opposed necessarily to reappointing her, but this would be her fifth term. So like, I guess I just wanted to talk about the idea of how do we get new people involved when you have boards that have people that have been on it for so long? I just wanted to get people's thoughts on that.
I mean, I was thinking the same thing, that, you know, part of what we wanted to do was to get more, give the opportunity for more people to be involved, and this, the Parks Board clearly seems to be a popular choice for a lot of people.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I agree. To put this in context, I was born in the 90s. And I think there's a way for us to keep a balance of historical perspective and fresh blood, and I think that's something I would like to strive toward. But I don't current, I don't really see that reflected right now. There's some, but like just generally throughout our whole process here. So I I agree with what Jenny and Sandy just said.
Yeah, and, you know, we're, yeah, I haven't come up with any algorithm with regards to, you know, how many people have served. Or is, and, you know, trying to keep a certain momentum going, if it's moving in the right direction. At the same time, you know, I don't necessarily want to displace everyone, but in this case, you know, you know, we could consider the, you know, two members, one to replace Karen Clerk. And then, you know, another, another person, and we'd have to decide which of the two incumbents we'd want to retain. You know, I'm open to, you know, going either direction. It's, you know, this isn't a situation where if there's incumbents and we don't have any problems with them, then we just go ahead and reappoint them, because that's what, you know, the council has said that they, you know, they didn't want to have happen, so.
So, so I will note, maybe, you know, and I and I'm open to to either, but I do know there's, there's also, you know, the rest of the people on it are relatively new. So I guess maybe for me, and I I know Ms. Parks is also the secretary, so I'm not maybe opposed to reappointing her, but then would request that next year, when we have two people up that have been on it for 20 years, that maybe at that time, we look at, you know, one of which is also on another board, we look at maybe doing.
Two of which are on another board.
But the two that are up next year are, only one is on another, so, but, so I guess that, I'm in, I'm fine with that. I just wanted to bring up that.
Yeah, and just to provide some context, I do, I do agree with you, but for years, we have struggled until just recently to get people to serve on our boards, and that's why you do see a lot of tenure.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. I mean, I think some of that too is, you know, I think we see once we made the process very open, it wasn't hard to get people, but I I don't appreciate it. I'm not saying I'm not appreciative.
I'm just, I just.
I agree with you. I just.
Oh, no, I just want to point out that it's only until recently where people have become very interested and the process has changed and a bunch of stuff, but before, it was very difficult to find people to to be on these boards, and that's why you see a lot of tenure on all of them. And you want some tenure, right? So they can pass down.
Right.
We want some, we also want some diversity, and I'm not sure that that's represented in in the applicants that have applied, and, you know, I'm not sure how to you know, everyone's been given an equal chance, so I, you know, I'm not, you know, sure if this is something that we we actually want to recruit.
And can we be more specific when we use the word diversity?
Well, when I say diverse, referring to the percentages of the population, so if we have 80% or 20%, you know, black residents, then, you know, it would be nice if we had you know, representation from black. uh, you know, representation from black community on our, you know, on some boards and commissions. I'm not sure what the percentages are for each of the uh, you know, minorities, but uh.
Okay, so um, and we can be mindful of um racial diversity and income diversity and ability. Housing, um homeowner status.
Yeah, you know, uh you know, the people that have applied, you know, are certain, most of them are qualified and, and all of them are well-intentioned. So, you know, that's what we have to work with. I'm just, you know, pointing out that you know, one of the stated goals was to have the boards and commissions uh representative of our population. And, you know, uh, I'm not sure how to accomplish that. Unless you are more assertive in terms of seeking out, you know, and, and actually soliciting, uh, you know, uh those members of, of those minorities, whether they be racial or otherwise.
And we can work, and we can work on the pipeline, and we can also work on like the culture and system and structures of the institution, so that it's like a place that people want to be.
And, you know, and as I've said, the uh, uh, the Citizens Academy has always been a gateway drug for uh serving on boards and commissions. And so um, uh, I would like to see more people get involved in Citizens Academy, but that's also depending on when we can resume you know, be, holding the academy. So, let's, let's move on. We can, we can have that discussion, but uh apparently it doesn't really come much into play in terms of our criteria here. As far as I know, uh, I'm not, I'm not familiar with every single person on here, but uh so I, I don't know of what ethnicity or, you know, that, that they're from.
So I'm looking for Chastity Maddox's application for the boards and commissions, and I'm not finding it in my email address. I'm just going through in my inbox. Um, and so I was wondering if someone had found that, or if her name had been mistakenly added to this list?
No, I can tell you, um.
It's like I, I see her on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I don't have her either.
Okay.
Uh, she was uh the one, all right, because I put them in a folder, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh person to send it. So if you have, do you have them in a folder?
So when I search in my inbox, it does not come up, even if I do just her first name or her last name. So I'm having initially finding original email. She's only occurring in.
Let me find it and I'll just forward it to you here.
Oh, and I, I apologize, I spelled her last name incorrectly.
Oh, that might be why.
Yep, that might be why.
How is it?
Oh, it's M A T T O X, as opposed to M A D D O X. Wow.
Nope, I found it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, I've never seen it spelled that way, and that shouldn't be, that's no excuse for not spelling correctly.
Thank you.
Okay, so uh with regards to the Parks, Parks and Recreation Commission, we know we have to fill one vacancy. And does anyone want to make a nomination?
I thought Becky Flynn did a nice job of explaining her history with serving the Maplewood and the MRH community. I don't know that we're ready to decide on a candidate yet for this one vacancy, since there were a significant volume of people who were interested, but I wanted to point out that I did appreciate that. And I thought that would be helpful perspective.
And I agree, Sarah, we don't have to, you know, make all the decisions tonight, especially the ones like, and s- some of them are easier than others.
Yeah, we didn't need to decide right after I said that comment. Um, I would love to hear other folks' input.
Okay.
But as, yeah, as many as we can make tonight, I think is this is a good idea and successful for moving this along.
Okay.
I Laney Schenkelberg have been um, a really active volunteer and parent leader with um MRH and um, have been learning more about city functions, so I was excited to see um somebody with like passion and energy uh interested in committing some time to the city.
She's also been, she's, sorry.
She's been.
Been positioned for over a year.
For a while, yes.
So, I, I thought everybody, I thought each of them had a really interesting perspective and a different one, sort of on, but they would but had her first because of that.
So, uh.
I did as well.
Yeah, I liked Rebecca Flynn, but uh Laney was number two for me. Laney rather was number two for me, so I'm, I'm really good with.
So do we have a we don't necessarily have a consensus here, but uh.
Well, not everybody has spoken.
It sounds like uh Laney has, has the most support here.
Well, Karen, Karen was gonna say something.
I, I, oh, I didn't, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought that I wasn't, I was messing around because I didn't think I could speak. So, I just wanted, I was just checking that, that it was, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, because I thought I was gonna say something while ago, and it never did give me the chance, and I thought, oh, something's wrong with the computer, so never mind.
Okay. So uh and as we go along, maybe we can uh make this process a little bit more uh formal, but right now yeah, the idea is to get people on these, these boards, and we have a lot of good candidates. Uh, it sounds like Laney has uh the most support on the council. So, uh, I've circled her her name under the Parks and Recreation Commission, unless anyone else has anything else to say.
I'd be supportive of Laney.
Okay. The next board is the Planning and Zoning Commission, and he has.
Sorry, did we want to indicate a number, a second choice since we've been doing that all along, or do we want to leave that one more open because we have so many candidates for that one?
What I heard was, you know, at this point, we were talking about re- uh reappointing uh Megan and Lisa, uh Megan Doherty and Lisa Parks, and just filling the one vacancy.
No, I meant the second choice, like we had done for the others.
Uh, I'm certainly open. I've heard Rebecca Flynn's name mentioned, Chasty's ma- name mentioned. Does anyone want to make a nomination for a backup choice here?
Yeah, I'll make a nomination for Becky Flynn to be the second choice, if our first choice is uh unavailable or unwilling.
Okay. I don't have any objection to that. So, um, my guess is that Laney will probably be interested in serving. She's been waiting a while, so. Uh, moving on to planning and zoning, we have two vacancies. We have two people that have indicated a desire that that, oh, three people, well, no, two people. One was late, uh if expressed desire, that was their first choice, uh Amber Withcomb and Mark Vander Ecker. Uh, does anyone have experience with uh Amber or Mark?
I, I could not find Amber's information. I'm not sure what's going on there, but I did not.
It was on, um, gee.
I forwarded it to you, Sean. I just found it. Um, I think Amber would be an excellent addition to the planning and zoning um group. I think she'd bring an interesting perspective. Um, she does admit, you know, in her application that she doesn't have a planning background, but has other development-related backgrounds, um, and is really dedicated, I think, to Maplewood, so I think she'd be a really interesting choice.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Well, there's only two people that, that went for it, so two vacancies to fill. One's a licensed architect. So, and I found Amber's stuff, and yeah, I mean, there, I have no problem with that either.
But you can't hold the architecture against him.
I tried not, leave me, I, my tongue bled a couple of times, but.
Okay, so it sounds like we have two candidates, Mark Vander Ecker and Amber Withcomb. Uh, to fill the uh two vacancies, and Donna Radkowski, um, I think she's fairly recent, as I recall.
The one that replaced me, so it's been a few years now.
Okay. Moving on then to the Special Business District. We have two vacancies, Chris Peoples and Jim Barton.
Do we have three?
I think we have three vacancies.
Oh, I'm sorry, three, and Gotham has uh reapplied. So on this one, uh.
There were three applicants, so that would be perfect.
Yeah.
There were.
There are four.
Well, one one was a reapplication.
Oh, great.
And then I think there's vacancies, correct? And there were three additional people who.
That is correct. And uh my experience has been Valerie Boring and Jennifer Ridgeway have both been involved in the Chamber of Commerce. Chris Kelling, uh, Anthony, who is he with?
Alan Wood.
Alan Wood.
Okay. And you know, I'm I'm familiar with Gotham, uh, he's been involved in the chamber, and he's been involved in in just about everything that's happened in the business district, so I would recommend reappointing him. And my choices would be Valerie and Jennifer, but that's only because I, I know they've been involved and I, and I know both of them.
So, I, I think there are four space, this, right? And we have four people?
I thought we had Jim Barton and Chris People who were, who are not in Gotham, who's uh.
Right, but then you had sent an email a long time ago that I didn't see because you like had asked something different on top of it, like where someone resigned to.
John Sauter.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, who was that?
John Sauter resigned on September eleventh.
Okay, uh, oh, well.
His business, his business closed, which is why.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, you are correct with uh, yeah. Okay, you are correct, and you know, that didn't show up on the, on the openings here, but uh.
Yes, because I did not see that email before.
Okay, yes, so we do have four vacancies. Uh, we have one incumbent. And so unless anyone, you know there, and there's only one, you know, second choice on here. No one else really wants to do it, so um, you know, seven and eight, it looks like they just might have, you know, made sure that they filled out in the, in, for all these cases, they filled out all the uh categories, so. That means they're willing to serve in any capacity, but uh we have four people that this is what they want to do, so I would recommend that we nominate Tom Gotham, uh, Chris Kelling, Valerie Boring, and Jennifer Ridgway.
Sounds good.
I would suggest that if any of them, um, if their minds, if, if they're not able to commit, that you then move on to Brad Jackson, who has indicated it's his second choice.
Agreed.
Yeah, agreed.
Agreed.
Yep.
Although I, although I had him for sustainability, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, do, do we have two openings on sustainability? I know we're moving there next.
I never got a chance on that. I'd never gotten.
Did not reapply, and Kate did not reapply.
And so, yes, we do.
And Andrew, but he expired last year.
In twenty nineteen, yeah.
And we just never, no one was replaced him? Yeah, alright.
Yeah, that vacancy just never came out. Or expired term.
So, at this point, we have of the, of the three openings, we have one reapplication, and I would like to go ahead and, and uh reappoint Nancy Schick, uh, which leaves two vacancies, and uh we have one person that was their first choice, and we have two people, but one of those two people, uh, who's, who's, was their second choice, is one of our choices for uh, planning and zoning. So, um now, with regards to, to Brad, uh, Anthony, was it, wasn't there a concern that he doesn't have a valid business license?
So I've actually spoken to him about that. There's actually some weird issue regarding property taxes. Um, I had, that was like a conversation I had with him a couple of months ago. Um, and I will also note that I, I believe his business was like graffitied and like targeted in a weird way, but uh for like, nothing, obviously, like under, that was like a result of his actions, but um, he is also a resident. Um, so even if there is still an issue with his business license, like he still lives in Maplewood. Anthony, was that right?
Was, was what right? Whether he, whether he has a valid business license or not?
The business license part, yeah.
I have to look to see if it's up to date. It, it, at some point, when the application came in, there was no valid business slices. But I don't know if that's changed, but I can find out.
I'm sorry, are we talking about that for, as a backup for the one, or as to be on sustainability?
No, sustainability, we need two.
Right.
I think we moved on to sustainability.
Right, so are you saying he can't be on it if he doesn't have a valid business license? I mean, that seems, I think that's a separate issue, if he's not.
Sustainability does have some wonky um requirements about the makeup. So we should just double check that we have all those covered.
I'll double check.
Um, so, I mean, Ralph is a business.
Right.
So you agreed so far to reappoint Nancy Schick?
Yeah.
We have two left, is that correct?
Yeah.
And I mean, does anyone know um Megan Homa?
Well, I mean, I'd like to look at her application rather than to talk about who we know and don't know.
If you'd like, I could look up that other issue, um you know, if, if we're gonna meet again, like you said, if we don't get through everyone, I just don't want to exclude somebody if they, if, if that's not actually still the case. It's been a while since that was the case. I don't know.
I guess the question is whether it's relevant to being on sustainability. That's the question.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to know why uh, you know, the, the business license is, isn't uh in force right now.
Yeah, and I'd like to know why it's relevant.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think if it's not a function of serving on a board, his resident, as a resident, that's what matters. So I guess I'd like to keep those issues separate if possible, because I don't, I feel like there's some, that's a troublesome. Unless, like Eleanor noted, there there are certain requirements that you have to be a business owner and that's the slot he's filling, then then it would be relevant, I guess, but if it's just as a resident, it seems irrelevant to me.
I agree.
As far as resident versus business members on sustainability, Anthony, do you have that answer?
I don't, but I can find, you know.
It's also listed at the bottom of Jenny's document. It just isn't clear to me who's who in the list. We have at least one business person. The question is, do we have a second?
I mean, so and and it's it's business owner in Maplewood, because, I mean, Nick Frisella's business is in like lighting and light efficiency and Heidi works for, I think she works for Straight Up Solar.
Right. And they're both Maplewood residents, yes.
They're Maplewood residents, so do we need to have like a Maplewood business owner?
I think we need to look at the the language of the ordinance. I'm trying to find it, because.
Was that the one that was was done by a resolution?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, that safe is locked. Otherwise, I thought I'd get that for you tomorrow when they don't, that's that would be in the safe. In the resolution books.
Of the resolution? I mean, so what's what's in? What is on the website, which I think, which Laura
The resolutions.
Laura linked to the resolution on the website.
Yes.
She has it that it's five residents and two.
Oh, good.
Yes, it says two residents and a business person for three years, two residents and a business person for two years, one resident for one year, and then afterwards, three years.
Was that a phased, was that like a phased entry to get staggered to?
Yeah, so that would be.
Yeah, that was, so she can eliminate that that verbiage.
Well, but what I'm saying is that results in four, five residents and two business persons.
Correct.
To be a business owner of Maplewood, it says a business person, so it's, I don't know.
It sounds like.
Says.
That work at Maplewood businesses, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
It sounds like we have our basis covered, though. That's what I'm hearing.
Just for clarification, the special special business district. Wait, we're not even talking about special business district. We're talking about sustainability.
That's correct. And let's see, so who's the other person that works in a Maplewood business? I know Ralph does. Nick is the Metro Lighting. Heidi's with Straight Up Solar.
And it looks like we weren't in compliance if no one else was, anyway.
Well, I think Nancy's just a resident. I think she's, I don't think she's a business owner.
Okay.
And Nick is a resident.
We need to determine, we need if we need another business member. So it sounds like we should probably table this until we can get that information.
If you guys look at the resolution, it's, they talked about the three-year terms, two residents, it's, this is a, this is an odd one. So I'll find out.
Says above, it does say in the second recital, it says it'll consist of seven members with five being Maplewood residents, two being business members that work at Maplewood businesses.
And and the the terms were just a phase in.
Yeah, I just skipped ahead. I didn't see that, yeah.
And, you know, we can change that with the resolution if we need to. Now that it's established.
All right, so the question is, we need to know who's who's a Maplewood resident and who's just basically a business member that works at a Maplewood business.
Yes.
I mean, so, well, we know Megan Homa is a resident. Right? And we know Brad Jackson works at a Maplewood business.
And a resident, right? Yeah. And Megan, and if for some reason, there's some, let's give Brad, if there is some some issue, maybe he can get it resolved, so it's not. I've known Brad for a long time. I'm I'm sure he.
Yeah. We also granted an extension to businesses, didn't we, on their business license?
I always want to make it clear, I don't know the answer.
Well, that's.
No, I know, but I just, I would like to, in the spirit of, we already extended that deadline for businesses, like, let's, you know, at the time of COVID, I think.
It was the prior business. It was the prior year.
Right, but.
But it could easily have been resolved. I just, I have not looked at that in a long time, so I'll find out.
Yeah, just let us know, but I think for now, we can say, you know, Brad Jackson and Megan are great, and let's pick a a third person who hasn't been picked for anything.
So we're thinking Brad Jackson, Megan, and Amber Brenner. We're talking about keeping Nancy Schick, correct?
That's that's what I've heard, yes.
So I wonder, though, did we appointed Mr. Brenner to library board?
Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
And so what about Chastity's, one of her high choices was sustainability?
And then Megan had hers as number two as well.
Yeah. So.
So how many are we looking for? I mean.
Just two.
Yeah, so, I mean, so can we, we don't need to, do we need to put like a third backup person or not?
Okay, no, because I think the problem is if if you need somebody who works at a Maplewood business, I don't assure any people do if there's a problem with with Mr. Jackson, so.
So Anthony's going to find out if any of the current members are business members, if we know that Ralph thicknesses. If there's another one, then we can select, you know, any of the other candidates only need to be a resident. If it needs to be a business person, then we need to make sure that that Mr. Jackson is has a business in good standing in Maplewood.
All right, sounds good.
So Anthony, I'll send you, I'll I'll send around an email summarizing what we've talked about.
Anthony, are you speaking?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just called the city clerk and and that it's, they're still not available business licenser, and it was not from this current year. It was from the prior year. I'll find out what everybody else is, and we can look at that. And like I said, if we need to clarify that, like, get that taken care of to get a business owner. And we'll find out. I'll get that information to you. I'll send it out via email.
Do we have any assistance programs for businesses if they have trouble paying a business license?
SPD, right? I mean, at the, yeah, yeah.
I'm just curious.
The grant program? I'm not sure. Is that? That's for science?
The grant programs are for physical improvements to facilities. The money that was available from St. Louis County. I know that I was getting weekly updates and forwarding them to the city. A lot of people got $15,000. Some people didn't get any. Some people got a portion of what they were asking for. And I'm not sure what happened to the additional money that, you know, the applications, I think, totaled one, three million more than they had budgeted. They, and Sarah, you might know some of these answers, too. But they went ahead and appropriated additional money to to, that would take care of everything, but they didn't hand out all that money, so I don't know. You know, and they don't have a process for reapplying. So, you know, I'm a little lost with regards to that.
I want to just go back to say that I was really excited to see Mr. Jackson apply for this position. To see his interest in serving on boards and commissions. I think it would be like a valuable, he has a valuable perspective to add on to the commission, and I appreciated what Sean said that I would, you know, if there's an issue, I'd like to give him a chance to remedy it. And because I was excited to see him be willing to serve.
Okay. We will get some answers from Anthony. So right now, the Sustainability Commission, Nancy Schick is 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 certain. We should probably just find out if we only need a resident, then Megan Homa is is definitely on that list. And then when we find out whether we need a business person or not, then we'll determine whether some of the other people that have that have that are down further on the list are business persons.
So for now, Barry, will you email Nancy Schick and Megan Homa?
Yeah.
Are you emailing the the people that we've identified?
I'm going to send out an email to everyone and make sure that everyone's in in agreement that that's what we had talked about, and then at that point, I will contact those people.
And just one thing to add, if, for example, this council doesn't like the the way that that this this resolution is composed, you know, maybe you want to have fewer business owners and just more Maplewood residents, or, you know, you can, you can do whatever you want. So if you guys, after I do this little background, if you guys decide you want me to amend this resolution and you pass a new resolution, we can, we can easily do that for you. Just let me know what you want. We'll make it, we'll make it happen.
I'd also like to point out, it just says you have to work for a business. So in my mind, if someone here worked for Maplewood Business and didn't have a valid business license, we wouldn't turn that. So I guess I understand he is also the owner, I guess, but on a technicality, I'm not sure that is even necessarily relevant if he works for a Maplewood business.
That's 100% up to the count. Again, I'm just letting you know.
I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, so real quick about the Sustainability Commission, since being sustainable in a community requires residents and businesses, that's the reason why we have two business owners there. I was just assured by Brad that he will have this stuff fixed shortly. Just an FYI.
And then when you also look at it, take that out of the equation, you know, when you've got someone like like the companies that Heidi and I believe Nick worked for, those are, that's kind of invaluable for a commission like this. So that's what I'm saying, if in the future we run into a problem getting a business owner, you can always make that. Because that's who you really want on these boards and committees, someone that actually works in that industry. Just food for thought if you want to change that in the future, if you're free, just let us know. We can.
You know, we we should also approach those members about recruiting their replacements. If, you know, if they decide they don't want to serve in the future, they could ask other people within their company to to potentially apply. If they also live in Maplewood. Yeah.
Or work in Maplewood.
Yeah.
So okay, so we're then we're going to make an assumption that Brad Jackson is going to be able to meet the requirements as a business member.
Yes.
Brad Jackson, yes, Nancy Schick, reappointment.
Yes.
And then Megan, yes, for the resident. Need all the requirements. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So.
Thanks for talking with Brad, Sean.
And so we have, we we should have all the boards and commissions filled. We have some new faces and we have a list of people that hopefully will continue to show interest in serving on boards and commissions at a later date, so. You know, as far as the the application process, if if people send in, you know, applications, obviously, we'll keep them on file. And then I guess, you know, we'll have since the terms expire June 30, when do we want to? Do we want to have people probably in place starting in, you know, by the end of May? So they take over the.
We we could perhaps have the submission period end at the end of April or give a deadline end of April, and then we would have May to do this.
Yeah.
Okay, and their term would start June 1st?
And you said, sorry, the deadline to apply would be end of April?
Well, I think if you, we've talked about, you have to give the existing people a deadline, right? So I think that's sort of has to be your deadline then, or are you?
I was just going to say, we need to. Yeah, no, it all.
And then we have May to to do it.
Yeah. Let's do it on time.
Do the terms expire May, June 30?
Right.
Okay, so then actually, we can move move that. If we have a month to, and we'll have at least one meeting, you know, in in June. But we'd like to give them, you know, time for the transition, so.
Because then you also have to do this process, then you have to do the resolutions, so in the event you didn't have two meetings in a month, if we stuck to that same timeline, it would give us plenty of time.
Yeah, June to discuss this is going to be tough.
Yeah.
April 30th then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we want to announce it on March 30 at the very latest, right?
I I would say in February, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can, I mean, just open it up at any time, but the deadline for your submission would be April 30.
And there's a Maple Leaf around that time, too, right? So that would be a good.
Yeah, we can make it work. And then also, another thing to consider is anyone that obviously applied and didn't get on, we obviously want to probably come first, because it's, you know, you you want to it's just neat, like Sean said, to reiterate that we have a lot of interest, because in the past, we didn't always have so much. It was tough to fill, so this is, we'll make sure those people get notified as well. We'll make sure it's in the Maple Leaf, and we can send out a social media blast, just like we did, and update our website. That should be no problems.
And we'll be collecting, you know, we'll have to do a little bit more due diligence next time, because if we have resumes that are a year old, you know, like Zach, you know, will be in consideration next year, but we'll, you know, you know, because he'll technically be in before next deadline, so.
And just to reiterate to anyone out there, like, if I'll do it, because we you know, throughout the year, someone, so, I mean, you don't have to wait till then, but that's good. No.
Okay, so I believe that we've done what we set out to do for the work session. So we've got about 20 minutes before we have our regular council meeting. So I'll entertain, I guess, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See you in 20 minutes.